... Yeah, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, sir.
I'm gonna go.
This is a good one. You see. Police department, Charles, cell phone. Also, the police is my heart. Plus, we're covering some. Plus, they call you that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hour of six o'clock having arrived, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll stand with them.
President of the United States of America and deliver the oath for which stands our nation under God in the mission of liberty and justice.
We've started doing something a little bit different in regards to the invitations this year. I've asked each council member to take a month to invite someone to come and give the invitation. And this month is Councilman Dexter King's month, and he's invited someone to come and give the invitation for us.
All right. I'd like to introduce my pastor, Reverend Charles Dumas Sr., Pastor St. Louis Church.
Amen. Love it on our heads. Eternally God our Father, we come for your presence today in the name of your son Jesus the Christ. Come mindful of his love and kindness and eternal mercy toward us. We, God and Father, thank him for this day and all the blessings that we are espoused today. As we gather here at the council meeting, pray the blessing upon the mayor and the council members. As they prepare to deliberate upon the business of, that is, the folk of them tonight, we pray that you would lead and guide and direct them in the way that you would have them become. Where shall blessing upon every citizen of this community? For we all are in this thing together. Help us to do our part and that job, but people are easier to carry out. Now, God, let you search our hearts, forgive us for anything that we may have committed today, what we do thought working to. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Dumas. Apparently, we have a four call members of the council are present. At this time, we have a special presentation to the police department in regards to their state recertification. And I'm gonna come down and reach some information regarding the state certification and recertification and ask Inter-Chief Eddie Dumas to come up and just plan to accept the plaque.
Eddie Harris.
Eddie Harris. I have a friend named Eddie Dumas. I'm sorry about that. All right. The Georgia Police Accreditation Coalition exists to improve the quality and delivery of law enforcement services to the citizens of its communities by endorsing and assisting in the processes of national accreditation and state certification. State certification is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances. The foundation of certification lies in the endorsement of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. Participating agencies conduct a thorough self-analysis to determine how existing operations can be adapted to meet these objectives. When the procedures are in place, a team of trained assessors verifies that applicable standards have been successfully implemented. The process culminates with a decision by a joint executive committee that the agency has met the requirements for certification. The Forsyth Police Department was initially certified in two thousand twelve under the direction of then-chief of police Keith Corley and certification manager Bob Sanderson. The original policies and revisions written by Mr. Sanderson were the foundation of the current policy and procedures guiding the Forsyth Police Department. Every three years, an agency must undergo an assessment to determine if policy aligns with state standards and procedures. In two thousand fifteen, Chief Keith Corley, Bob Sanderson, and newly hired certification manager Rick Sees Rule undertook this task of recertification. The command staff, public service technicians or communications officers, tack officer, investigators, and officers were an integral part of the success of the agency in recertification. Excepting this plaque of achievement on behalf of the city of Forsyth Police Department is Inter-Chief and Patrol Division Major Eddie House. Congratulations. I would like to thank Inter-Chief Harris and all the men and women of the Forsyth Police Department for the dedication and hard work that y'all have had every day of making the city of Forsyth safe. And it's evident in the recertification and having the proper policies and procedures in place. So, we congratulate and thank you. I also want to thank the police department. It took a team effort for us to achieve this, and I just want to thank everybody that was part of it. We thank you.
Also, it's for Ricksey. Step up. Ricksey, on behalf of Forsyth Police Department and the Georgia Association of Chief of Police, I just want to present you this flag of appreciation for doing such a great job being the certification manager at Forsyth Police Department.
Thank you, Chief.
Good job, Chief.
Now, we move along in the agenda to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Number one is the approval of minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen council meeting. Number two is the approval of accounts payable invoices, two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Number three is the approval of requisitions greater than five thousand dollars, of which there are three. One for Georgia Hydrant for emergency work on Lee Street, two valve insertions of thirteen thousand dollars. B is for Stuart Irving Company, first quarter commitment with ECG of eleven thousand, one hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents. And item C is Georgia Asphalt Emergency Work on Conifer Drive for thirty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see that we... I'd like to move A, if you can see it out. And more. I think we just ought to do away with this consent agenda. We've used it in the past, and the idea was to sort of speed up the process of the meetings. Anytime we had anything that we want to talk about, we pulled it out and talked about it. So, really just addressing the minutes. I don't know that it saves us a whole lot of time. We spend more time on the consent agenda than taking stuff out and adding back in. So, it would be my wish that we just do away with the consent agenda and go back to what we used to do.
So, we have a motion. Is there a motion?
How many did you want to motion this?
Have a motion to move away from the consent agenda and go back to the old way. Second, by Mr. Dodge, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. You land this one. All right? And do you have another motion regarding the... Or I guess we're dispensing with the consent agenda as of this agenda, so.
I guess we'll change.
So, those three items are out.
Yeah, I guess we're gonna change our current agenda for today's meeting to scratch the consent agenda. And then items one, two, and three.
So, vote on individual.
Vote on individual.
All right. So, item number one, approval of minutes of January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen council meeting. Is there a motion? Second. Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Any discretion on the minutes? All in favor? Any notes? Item number two on the agenda is the approval of accounts payable invoices totaling two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. So, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Do the manager like to tell us what we believe?
Here are invoices for tonight. Administration fine one thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Court nine hundred fifty dollars, fifty-five cents. Senator two seventy-six forty-four. Fire Department one thousand, three thirty-eight sixty-five. Police Department six thousand, one eighty-eight eighty-one. Recreation sixty-two oh eight. Better hometown six ninety-five eighty-four. Street Department twenty-seven thousand, six fifty-one thirty-five. Garage three thousand, five hundred forty-seven seventy-six. Electric two thousand, eight hundred fifty-six thirty-two. Water one hundred eighty thousand, thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Sewer six thousand, seven forty-one eighty. Table one thousand, one forty-one twenty-nine for a total of two hundred sixty-two thousand, seven thirty-nine thirty-three. There are no additional invoices for squash or plants, so the rental is two sixty-two, seven thirty-nine thirty-three.
Any questions or discussions?
I have one question, and no one's got a single. I guess we're still wrapping things up, but when are we gonna be wrapped up?
We thought we were already wrapped up, but there were two invoices for programming that came back from... They had not been paid, and those were invoices that they did not... It's programming that they did not invoice us for, and so it was two, one for June and one for July of two thousand fourteen. So, when, I guess when they were doing their... They realized that those had not been paid, and so they had to pay those.
Maybe the model is asking, "How about the water?" What's the fault?
The management always meant with the Georgia Department.
I thought it would be something like that.
Anything else? All in favor? Any notes? Next item on the agenda is the approval of requisitions greater than five thousand dollars, and we have three of those. So, I guess we'll take A first. Georgia Hydrant Emergency Work, Lee Street, two valve insertions totaling thirteen thousand dollars.
Move, we pay those.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Y'all familiar with where those pounds and all those gone? All right, all in favor? Any notes? Item B, under number three, is Stuart Irving Company First Quarter Commitment with Electric Cities of Georgia for eleven thousand, one hundred four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Do you want to review it first?
I like my motion that we make payment.
I'll say that to discuss.
I don't want to say.
We are members of the joint purchasing with Electric Cities, and they are revamping the way that they do joint purchasing previously. It was if the city wanted to be a member of the joint purchasing, it was part of your annual contract that we have with them. On the joint purchasing, apparently, they did not have very much interest for most of the cities. So, what they're doing is by quarter, they're sending things out for bid to get the bulk price. And this is what the electric department Johnny has come up with, that he absolutely knows he will need for the first quarter. No extras, just this is what he knows he will need in the first quarter. What Electric Cities is gonna do, they're gonna take this with this with all the rest of the cities that they have asked to join in. Now, what I have asked Electric Cities, since we're paying a subscription fee for this, and they've asked other cities to join in for free for six months, I've asked for a refund for our six months because we're already paying. They want to join in, they're gonna get it free, so I've asked Electric Cities for our portion of that back. Have not gotten anything back from Mr. George yet, but I'm sure that I will be hearing from him. But this is electric supplies that we wanted, that we have to send to them, and then they'll do the bulk purchase, and then they will redo this every quarter, hoping that we'll get better pricing from some of the vendors.
So, you're saying that we're gonna pay us every quarter?
Well, every quarter, we have to come back with what our supply need is going to be for the electric department. It may or may not be this, could be more, could be less. But this is what Johnny feels that we will absolutely need the first quarter.
So, what if a snowstorm, bad ice storm hit in the beginning of March, and that number goes up?
Just what we need. We can check with Electric Cities and see if there's another city that purchased more than what they needed, or we can go out on our own and purchase like we've been doing anyway.
It doesn't limit us to any way of getting what we need. Yeah.
Does not. Does not. Because we've been a part of joint purchasing, and we've used joint purchasing on certain items. But because we have a local electric supplier here, we use them a lot because then we don't have to warehouse it because they have a lot of their supplies that are already in their warehouse.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any notes? Next item is item C, Georgia Asphalt for Emergency Work on Conifer Drive in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Everybody familiar with that project?
I don't know.
It was a sinkhole that I think has brought our attention.
I remember we said it.
We have a motion.
I said.
And a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Michael, you might explain.
Yeah. Mother said he was... Yeah. Michael was spent out, my man.
Yeah. It was a sinkhole on Conifer Drive that had to be repaid. And I think you brought it up a couple of weeks ago. Was it Beverly or some other guy?
I... There was an emergency situation where the road had not completely came down, but because the drain under the road there on Conifer Drive, the subdivision, the drain had stuffed up and it had eroded back and then eroded under the roadway as well. So, we had to... We had one lane of traffic that was closed for a couple of weeks until we could get all this and get the contract ready to work on it. They worked Thursday and did some, did a clean out, and then they worked Friday. Thought that they would have the road open back up no later than three o'clock on Friday. They were still there after dark on Friday, and they stopped, and then they came back Saturday and finished up that repair work, and then they're out there today. We did not get any asphalt for today, not with the rain, but they're supposed to have the asphalt for this week.
And my comment on that is strongly that irregardless whether it was by design, fault of design, or fault of work, or just failure from age, you know, it cost the city thirty-nine thousand dollars, over thirty-nine thousand dollars. And the fact that that's a subdivision that was accepted into the city in some period of time together. And we just, the council just needs to be aware that anytime you accept a street into the city that you're accepting responsibility or something just like. And here's thirty-nine thousand dollars we're paying. You know, if it's due to age, then that's so be it. We have a lot of streets to look at, and we just need to be careful next time we annex in a street and make sure it's built up to standards.
Anything else? All in favor? Any notes? Item number four on the agenda is approval of event permit for free closings for the Precity Festival from March eleventh through thirteenth of two thousand sixteen.
As a member of the Precity Committee, I will review this with you. You may or may not have heard that the committee was going to try to do some changes this year, but with the backup having to leave and Lindsay just being new hired, and there were several other changes that were already making, we decided to not make those changes this year. We are looking at next year to see if we can enlarge the Precity's footprint and close like we did a couple of years ago when we closed Lee Street. That will not happen this year. That was just for, that was just something we were looking at. And a couple of years ago, we asked that we start closing down Jackson Street on Friday so that some of the food vendors coming in. We're asking this year if we close this portion of Jackson Street, that's the block of Main to Johnson, and then from Morris to King for Kids Corner because this year we have a turnkey operation that's coming in to do the Kids Corner. Instead of having to pay individually for each one of the rides that the kids have at Kids Corner, they'll pay for a wristband. And so, in order for them to bring all of that, you know, we need to go ahead and close the street down on Friday morning. They probably won't come in until like middle of the day, but we'll need to go ahead and close it down Friday morning so that people can park there. But as far as the rest of it, everything else will be the same as previous Precity's.
Yes, John, it will be open on Friday.
Johnson will be open. We will cut the intersection here on this side, so Johnson will be open, and so will Main. We will only close the inner block.
And then for the festival itself, it'll be Johnson, Johnson, Jackson.
From Main all the way to King. Johnson from Lee Street to Phelps. Adams from Lee Street to Phelps. Morris from Lee Street to Phelps, and King from Lee Street. That's the footprint of that. Now, you've already approved for the Pregnancy Center to have the stroller race that will be on Saturday, and that will be on Jackson from Chambers down to Brentwood Place.
All right, is there a motion?
Sure would. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any notes? Item number five is the approval of amendments to the fire department policy relating to prior experience considered in promotional process and changing approval from personnel manager to city manager.
This is the one I made a footprint on two weeks ago trying to explain this.
So, you're thinking the food riot is murder freedom?
Yeah. This is just for promotional purposes. So, if there is an employee in the fire department that has all the rest of the qualifications for sergeant or higher, that at the chief's discretion, he can look at previous experience as sergeant or higher with another department. So, if you have someone that is working in our department, and they have worked there for two years, and they have, there's twelve qualifications to be, to be up for promotion process. If they have all eleven, they're missing the four years experience because one of them is a minimum of four years experience as a full-time, part-time firefighter with the Forsyth Fire Department. If they have four years as a sergeant or higher with another department, the chief can look at that and say, "This person has met all of those requirements and can be promoted." That's simply all it is.
Some of what you said to me.
I know. And on the second page where it says, "Under appointments with the city manager, may I appoint one candidate that previously said that the chief with the equivalent of the personnel manager, may I appoint one candidate?" And just change that to city manager. Those are the two changes that we would like to make in this policy.
So, second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any notes? Next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments to the police department policy relating to section four point one zero Uniform Dress Code here in grooming standards.
Section four point ten, section two, section H. This is changing the spelling of a word. It was the word flashlight for their flashlights were misphalan. And then section M, where it said body armor will be issued for officer certified personnel. We're wearing a body armor for the officer's safety mandatory when engaged in active law enforcement duties or wanting extra duty. It previously said is strongly recommended, and chief would like to change that to mandatory.
Those are the only change?
Yes.
Lose the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now, is this coming up similar to this, or is that included in that?
This is just an example.
Okay. All in favor? Any notes? Next item on the agenda, item seven, is the approval of amendments to police department policy relating to section four point one one tattoos, body art, intentional scarring, mutilation, dental ornament, mutation, and brain.
The chief is requesting a couple of changes here under the purpose. He would like to change that to say the purpose of this policy to establish standards for maintaining professional appearance under guidelines. Instead of any body art, he would just like to say the display and public view of body art. And then he lists those that are prohibited in the policy. And then, under section three, effective the date of this policy, exposed body art instead of all body art. And the final authority of this policy shall be with the chief of police or his designated.
Is there a motion?
Come on. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any notes? Next item on the agenda is the city manager report.
Some quick reviews. We was asked about the lighting on Johnson at the last council meeting. Johnny Hodges is digging together a prototype, and we will begin with these property owners that will be affected to make sure that they are paid with replacements because those lights will be on the steps and on the sidewalks. And so, as soon as he has those this week, we will get those to property owners. There is a meeting next Wednesday, February ten at the two o'clock. You probably seen a meeting invite for me. We will be inviting all property owners that will be affected with some changes at the Department of Transportation and the railroad would like to make to Lee Street, East Johnson Street to College Crossing and the Indian Springs Crossing. So, DOT, the railroad, any of their representatives will be here, and then we'll try to have all of those property owners. And we'd like for you all to be here as well. You should have seen all of the information that I sent out with the major changes that they're trying to make, especially to Lee Street.
And that includes, just so everybody knows, that's a median that they're proposing on the north side of the railroad tracks on South Lee Street, which would prohibit if you're traveling south on South Lee Street from turning left onto Railroad Avenue. It would also prohibit traffic from turning if they were going north on South Lee Street or if they come North Lee Street tracks, I guess. There was a South Lee Street, North on South Lee Street. You would not be able to return left there just past the tracks where you turn. That's what I worry about with this.
They're actually gonna put, they're proposing to put a median on both sides of the railroad track. The one on this side of the railroad track there at O'Reilly's would be smaller, but as the mayor said, the one on the other side of the railroad track there at Railroad Avenue would prohibit anyone getting in that center lane there. And so, that's going to affect any of the businesses that's on either side of Railroad Avenue. Taco Bell, Advanced Auto Parts.
What's driving that? Man, they got studies on numbers on how safe, it'd be safer to do that? Is it for aesthetics or?
I asked that, Dean. It is for safety. This is part of the federal program to make safer railroad intersections, railroad crossings, and it's administered through the state DOT. And I saw, I pressed him on that a little bit. When was the last accident at that intersection involving someone at the crossing? It was nineteen eighty-two. For the reason I...
I thought we didn't wait that long before we put them out.
So, I think it's important that the people, we're involved in the process, and the business owners are involved, and give our input because I think, you know, they can, they can probably decide to do it somewhere else if they don't do it. Like, our input will weigh into that decision.
It was directly and back all forward businesses in the quadrant of Advanced disposal. Sure, Taco Bell, O'Reilly's.
It impacts public safety as well because you got a median there now at three o'clock in the afternoon. Traffic's pretty thick through there to the center line.
Yeah, right. We're as good as that.
Well, they closed so that if the median is there at that intersection on the other side of the railroad track, and they closed the crossing on Indian Springs Drive, clients collision will have a hard time getting their vehicles in and out and people getting to them. And we brought up all of that with them, but they, you know, they want to talk to the... Or we asked them to talk to the state public because I'm sure there's gonna be several property owners that are gonna have concerns.
Yeah. So, I would encourage anybody that centers to come out on a team. Oh, yeah, so I would encourage anybody with centers to come out on the ten, that'll be next Wednesday, the ten, at two o'clock, hearing council chambers.
Can we add other, um, intersections?
Well, you know, when they originally came.
To put a median?
No, not for the median, but for probably another, I mean, I, I agree, we have a traffic issue in the city percent. But what they're proposing is, is made as a detriment to.
To, yeah, sure, I agree. What they're proposing is a median that would keep you from going around the railroad crossing order, which is not a significant issue.
And plus, we just spent three hundred plus thousand dollars redoing railroad tracks, making a, a nice thoroughfare. I hear it, and they're probably not putting it out.
I would love it.
Yeah. Well, we, we, we'll be here to talk.
I'll see somebody figuring out a way to kinda, kinda go around that little median just to get to Railroad Avenue, how do you wanna do it?
Yeah, that'd be a problem, that'd be a problem with it.
That's right, that'd be the very first one of that.
Yeah, right.
Everything to do with crossing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would raise that, that'd be too bad.
Yeah.
So I told you, John.
So I, I, I think all of us need to be here, yeah, if you can, anyway possible, right?
And if, if you know someone that, that you think should be here as well, will you let me know and I'll send them an invitation? Or you, and, and send them an invitation, um, and I, I will be getting in touch with all the property and business owners.
Okay, good.
That was good. I'll admit with the gentleman that is going to do the, um, letterwork for the, uh, garbage can enclosures on Square, and he's drawing up a, a recommendation, and he will, he will be presenting that back to us. We do have a couple of vehicles that are on go deal for sale, those vehicles that we raised with the, uh, vehicles that we got at the, um, auction. Those should be coming, I think we had bids on everything that was out there, so those should be selling fairly soon. We have a large stockpile of old utility poles that Johnny was just sort of trying to get rid of out at the, uh, electric department. He's, um, working with Advanced Disposal right now to see if they can come up with a remedy. First, to get rid of the large stockpile that we have, and then second, as they have old hi, uh, old poles that they need to get rid of, something that, that they can do with him. Uh, pole inspections were completed, they inspected two hundred and forty-five poles, and only twenty-one of those two hundred and forty-five poles failed, uh, which is, is very good. And the last thing is, first of all, I'm working on revamping the traveling expense forms, and I'll make a couple of recommendations back to y'all to, to fix that policy, hopefully put that form all in one form. Um, we'll get everybody on the same page, so that it's, uh, we can get you reimbursed and we get everybody reimbursed at, at the same ways, so to find to, to, to figure out how to, how to do different ways.
Good.
That's all.
Very well. City attorney report?
Uh, I'll, I'll let you on one thing on the, the, uh, and, uh, Beverly Street came up, uh, back in December, I guess. Steve Cohen's been in plat, both property owners opted to acquire poles on their side, so, um, he's getting plat ready so he can complete that. And, uh, I sent a memo out, updating you on the, uh, water sheet, if you have any questions like that, you can let me know. That's all I have.
That, that shouldn't be a problem on Doug's, right?
That was no problem.
There's no problem.
That was, you've already started that action.
Right, mm-hmm.
In order for the city to, uh, convey out what's been closed, it has to be planted so that these can be drawn from the city to the two property owners on each side. One is the, uh, brand hospitality, the, uh, new motel's coming, hotel's coming there. And the other is, uh, Dennis Pritchett, who owns the, uh, the home on the other side of the, no longer street area.
Thank you.
All right, under the mayor's report, I'll be very brief, um, a couple of things. One is, we, uh, told you before that we were going to be putting the meetings on our YouTube channel for the city and tying them to our website, so we have a camera here tonight, and we are recording. We don't have bandwidth to live streaming, but it is being recorded, and the city clerk will have it up on the city's YouTube channel by the end of business day tomorrow. And we don't have the link yet to, uh, put it on the, to link it to the website, but that should be done very soon, maybe even this week. So in the future, you'll be able to go after the council meeting and click on the date of the meeting and watch the meeting in its entirety, or whatever portion you want to. And also, we'll have the archive of all meetings from here forward on it. Of course, another thing that you know if you're here already is that we changed our meetings to Mondays. This is our first Monday night meeting, and, uh, council voted to do that through the end of June, and then to reevaluate at that time, and see what we're going to do, but we'll be the first and third Mondays at six o'clock. Um, another thing, um, when we were at the Georgia Municipal Association Mayor's Day Conference, we had a good conference in Atlanta, um, weekend before last, and all members of the council were in attendance for that. Uh, learned a lot, attended some good classes. One of the things that came to our attention, Councilman Stroud, I want to get him props for signing us up for Active Georgia. They give out an award when you're up there to the city that is deemed the most active. And, uh, there's a website that you go on and sign up to be a member of a team for the city. So we've established a City of Forsyth team, and the whole idea of this movement is to promote activity and better health for your citizens, so you can go to Active Georgia, and you can sign up as a member, and once you sign up as a member of Active Georgia, you can join the City of Forsyth's team. There will be events coming nearby, and hopefully we can sponsor some here, for which you will get points by participating in those events. And also, um, I think we'll probably be doing some fitness challenges and things like that, hopefully. And we'll talk to Councilman Stroud about that, see what we can, what we can maybe get going, and hope the council can get behind it. And maybe we can go up there and receive, uh, for next year for most active city in the state.
I don't know, somebody had like seventy-five thousand points.
Sorry?
And we have three hundred and forty-five, okay, we got a ways to go.
Who am I asking?
But we're already in fourth place, and we just joined, so I think there are only five teams. We, we got, we got some work to do, but we are ahead of the city of Newman right now.
All right, okay.
So I think that's good, and we'll be bringing you updates on stuff like that, but it's, it's just good to let the community know and get involved in that type of thing. And, uh, Wednesday, I think all the council members know, uh, be the, uh, uh, Chambers, eggs and issues breakfast, and it focuses on local government, and I'll be giving kind of a synopsis of the state of the city, um, at that. And I think Chairman Builderback will be there to present for the council, so any other candidates, appreciate your comments, et cetera. And any inputs you have, if you wanna say something certain, you're welcome to. That's really all I have at this time for the mayor's report. Um, ad hoc committee reports, are there any reports in that ad hoc committee, have y'all met yet?
We have not, Mr. Mayor, I would like to do it, uh, hopefully next week we can be the one there. Uh, I haven't discussed with, with the members yet, um, but we can discuss it offline, and we're gonna be trying to be suitable. I want you to, I'll make sure I let you and Mr. Jackson know as well.
I did notice some of you, uh, my wall, I probably, uh, just, hey.
Yeah, and eventually. Well, that's the other thing, you can, yeah, I didn't say that, so you can track your own activities. So if you're walking, if you're running, if you're doing that, you post those activities on there, and you earn points for the city. I do.
So you gotta go sign up and then post. Who's gonna get it?
Okay.
Right.
You showed me, I think.
And anyway, what I always, uh, comment on is that the cable was, I don't know who did that. You're talking about the car, and I, the Jason, the city park Jason, to the field.
I don't, I, I want to come in and do that, who knows, with cable though.
All right. What about the, uh, train ad hoc committee, y'all still doing anything?
I don't know. Yeah. Um, uh, I've had the information, I've been writing off for, for the historical society, and so I will be meeting with him very soon to do the presentation today.
I might like to attend to, to give me a heads up.
I think the committee actually will be come back and do the presentation to the, before I went to the.
Okay, right, yeah. All right, so we'll have an ad hoc committee prior to your presentation. Who's chairing that committee?
Mike and I. And, and we made, uh, the meeting a long way, just, yeah.
Sounds good. And we'll get some, some movement for them. All right, any, any questions or anything related to the ad hoc committees? Additional council reports?
Uh, I, yeah, in the thing you were talking about, it was the, uh, the urban city is completely, the frame of wellness, um, the youth that was there at the G M A program. Uh, uh, I don't know who was sponsoring. I, I do have a car, it's from, I don't know who it was, it's in the name. They were well and poor, they, they, uh, one, yes, they were very, very sharp. And I would like to see, uh, my kind of students, and I, I mentioned Jackson Dambler once, a couple of weeks ago. And, but it's not, it's not a key, but it's a true life.
Right.
But they, they, they established a governing body, that's an understanding. And then they, they, uh, unless they practiced better, and they, and I don't know if they would come to our meetings.
Yeah, and I think we brought that up actually at the council retreat, maybe having a junior city government and us working with, with some students at the high school level to, uh, kinda have them shadow, you know, share ideas, and, uh, kinda learn about the governing process. And I think that's good.
Yeah, maybe I'll be a force of the right direction.
How would we, uh, how would we choose the members of the junior council?
Well, they'd be so, I think, students. Uh, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to do it, but I know there's, there is an.
People, I don't think we would, we would have, students. Yeah, I think we would just have the act, and set up.
Right.
Come to us, maybe we'll come to you.
Several years ago, um, the government class at the high school, they actually came to a meeting, and then they had a mock council meeting.
Right.
They, they came to, to the council meeting, and then they took the agenda, they went back and looked at it, but they did like you said, they, they appointed themselves as to, there were three council members, who was mayor, who was what's coming up, and then doing the, the, the standing back and forth, so it was the government class that was four classes ago.
I was impressed that, uh, the ward scout troop, when they had to come in from their class, that might be another avenue that we wanna look at, people that are willing to do it, so. Uh, then there was, uh, Randy Norris, she's the dean brother, I'm not sure who would be, that would be the one that makes it.
And that can, that will pop out and get it, uh, the center back. Yeah, sure would.
I've actually talked to Randy today, and a lot of talked to Davis, I'm not the brand one, but, um, they would like to come to the first council meeting each month to help the, the guys, because they have to have so many community service hours, and they can count coming here and doing the pledge once a month towards the community service hour. So they're, they're gonna do that once a month, or is that?
I think that's right. And the more community involved we get in our meetings, the better it is. While we're, before we all move on from the subject of training, and Mr. Guy, we would like to come in and congratulate Mr. Guy for receiving his two hundred and four hour, uh, award for training through Georgia Municipal Association, which is no small task, a lot of perseverance, and a lot of effort put into that, so congratulations.
Very good company.
Yes, and Councilman Lawrence has, uh, has already gone before and then gotten the, a couple of years ago, one.
Yes, sir.
So congratulations to both of you for the diligence in that, and everybody else for working on our own, uh, individual training. Councilman Stroud, you got anything?
Yes, two things. Um, on March twenty-sixth, I talked to Councilwoman, um, Marge Campbell, she's also over at the, um, Monroe County Achievement Center. They're putting on their fit to achieve, this is the second annual five K road race that we're doing. Um, the biggest thing since this is in Forsyth, it benefits our youth. Uh, she did invite me out as well as the rest of the council mayor, who else wants to come out? Uh, come on out, but then on March twenty-sixth, and all proceeds due goes to Monroe County Achievement Center. Um, now we are posted, I have not already posted on the city chief site, uh, on our city Forsyth, Forsyth. Second thing, January, I want to say early January was, a lot of us didn't really know this, neither died till it was over with. But we had a, um, a youth football team that went to the Georgia Dome. Uh, played in the little youth football championship game at the Georgia Dome, and won. I was, I, it was headed up by, uh, Martina Walker, who lives in the city of Forsyth, Mario Harvey, lives in the city of Forsyth, graduate very personally, played in the NFL, and also Dewan Penham, um, as well as other coaches, but we had a group of, um, I think seven or eight year old, maybe, um, youth football players. I've never played on, I've been to the Georgia Dome, but they played on the Georgia Dome's field, and that's, that is awesome, you know? I think it was carried in the report, but I wouldn't like to say publicly, but these are our youth in our community that represented us. They won the game, they represented us well, the kids should be committed, the coaches should be committed as well. I did talk to one of the, uh, coaches, Dewan Penham, they're now even, um, committed to doing a travel youth football league as well as they're doing an all-season track program for these young, uh, for these players, now, you know, like, so it's good to hear you can see their youth are doing the right thing, um, and they're also having a very strong emphasis on being a student before they're off, so that is awesome to see things like that going on in our community. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, good news, good news. Councilman Bill, you got anything? Councilman King? Councilman Bill?
Nothing to add, sir.
Councilman Lawrence?
Well, just one question, uh, uh, I had one of the citizens actually, uh, fact, uh, Councilman King is on, on North Cherry Street, on James Streets, doing the, uh, street skating. Uh, we made that street a one-way street on James Street, and there's a little circle there, and we have a tree there. The tree is gone, it is, it's barren, are we responsible for putting another tree there?
Actually, the, the young gentleman that's doing the work over here, and the planners beside City Hall, um, I can talk to him and see if we can get him to go over there and look at that.
Okay.
Um, he can probably do some plantings over there, um, replace the tree, do some, some other plantings, and, um, it would cost us the, the materials.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. That was it, that's my question.
Okay. Anything else, any council members?
I have one last thing I apologize, I know we discussed it in the retreat about maybe doing a spring or fall cleanup, maybe. Have you put any more thought into that about a date?
Not a date that I thought about. I went through the park yesterday, and I thought about getting out there and showing us to go and clean up.
I tell you, it don't have to be anything elaborate, just a garden, just a garbage bag and, and, well, it's a little deep, so.
I'm all for it.
Do you recall one, do you, do it not have to be anything too fishy?
When I come up and down Forty-One, Brooklyn Avenue, uh, I think about that, back in, uh, ten. And then they got to those curbs, I mean, not curb, but.
Got a motion, buy back to the.
I think it's, uh, the manager.
All right, but good, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that has been on my mind since the retreat, as I ride around the city, look at different areas that we can focus on, but maybe start with parks and take a day and go out there, and I think we could clean a big thing, spruce it up a little bit, so I'm all for it.
Citizens, so I haven't, they'll take more pride as well when they see the leaders out there doing, you know, you're the leader, they're serving, and I think that will be a lot of support helping us out, my dream is, well.
Absolutely, is a Saturday better for y'all, but it's their best day, they're, mornings, I presume, more, easier than that. All right. Hearing nothing else from the council, we'll move to public comments at this time. Uh, reminding that anyone who wants to come up and make a comment, you have four minutes to do so. Please state your name and address, and you may address anything you'd like to. Please state your name and address and may address anything you'd like to check.
Good evening. My name is James Long.
Eight sixty-five Mount T, bro.
Mr. Milton, I asked you a question one time, I feel, I asked you how could the land owner put stipulation on land that the tax payer that had paid for? You told me that they couldn't do it, you're right, they didn't do it, y'all did.
That's right. It's part of the compensation for the acquisition of the property.
Y'all can make a right too. It's also settled right here. I didn't bring it, I forgot my glasses, but I had this paper ready, some good stuff in this paper right here. Enough, just enough to get citizen. I'm asking y'all one more time to consider letting us go fishing out there over there, because nineteen eighty-five, you built a thing like that. Ninety-five, you came back and put stipulations on it and wasn't nobody fishing out there at that time, black people. You know, so you stopped there for fishing, but you allowing other people to fish. That just like telling people that, me, that I can come up here to the city council meeting and the other citizens can't. That's not fair. So I'm asking y'all to speed it up. And they said that y'all could speed it up in here, you want to see that? We have a comp to do? Yeah, y'all should have some comp to do, I got it from here. I didn't have it, I just had to pay attention to it. But it came, y'all, anyway. Some good stuff in there too, Mr. Milton.
I think you all were provided some information after the last meeting, yes, by the city attorney. And I did, incidentally, I did write out there.
Yeah, you see that house out there too, man?
Yeah.
Ms. Diane, she did a report on, and somehow enough she, so Mr. White left the house out there.
Well, I didn't see the house, the gates were closed, I didn't, I went to the gates. And then Councilman Dodd, who was there, who was there there, waved a lot.
Last time, Matt Howard had told them to take the locks off that gate out there. Because, you know, people still go out there because other people have keys. And so they allow other people to go out there and fish when they get ready, but we can't, you know?
I know other cities have stopped letting the public have issues in their, because.
They started, started opening up red doors.
Because of the liability issue.
They started opening up red doors, Joan County, bond you all, you know, letting people go out there, you know? And then it could be a revenue for the, for the city too, because you can charge them so much to go out there, you know? But it's not fair that you're going to give one person permission to go out there, and that's not right. And I'm not going to, let this get by right here.
I'm not trying to be smart on this question, so don't take it that way, but how, how would you get to the red?
The same way the city goes in there, the easement that got down through there. And I think it's something like five hundred people, that five hundred people rent around there, and I think I seen where the land owner came on out there.
Right, but you have to, you have to go across their property to get them.
Well, my understanding, my understanding is that road, it's more than road out there. More than lane or something like that, and it goes all the way through, you can't cut it off right there.
Well, that's what a fence is, right? It's dead end, right?
Yeah.
You can't get in there, it's always locked.
It was, they had taken the locks off.
Can't you go down quarter to way?
Yes, we can go far too.
And go in that way?
That road goes all the way through. You got to easement to get in there. I mean, you know, other people go in there now, y'all got a house sitting on that, I'm going to kick about that right there.
He owns that property.
That's all right, he owns that property. And the tax payer, the tax payer own that red door out there too.
I saw you stop, I like that. Council, you might play somebody, go out there and clean up? Play somebody big out there, go out there.
You don't have to bring nobody yet, but. I don't school out there, no living kids.
Well, I, I really think we.
I think y'all two think it right.
They keep it from coming over so much. We got, we need to give them some kind of tools, some kind of, and.
I'd like to see council addresses.
Can we get a landowner up there, has that been discussed with the landowner?
I'd like to ask the city manager to get an opinion from the city engineer as to whether because that's, it's in the code, and it was the purpose to acquire drinking water. And it was from the beginning not to be a recreation area for fishing. And I'd like to see the city engineer has any opinion whether the requirements have changed on there or not.
Well, council did it, you know, I think they done it out.
The Department of Natural Resources.
A little racist, just like that somewhere.
At the time, because it was drinking water and it was not to be for the public's use because of, well, drinking that water.
How can you say that for the view under anything out there?
Yes, for that, please, thank you.
All right, but there's an issue regarding the leads too.
Part of the compensation for acquiring property in a safe city, substantial sum of money, was that the, and none of the property owners owned to the water.
No.
There is a buffer on it. In several, now, indeed, it was set out that the restrictions on the use of the lake, as part of what the D N R requirements.
So, so it could, yeah, this body just change that because it's part of the compensation.
Well, that's why I'm asking for this opinion, just to see what the, what the D N R rules are now for drinking water. And then second, that has to be there too.
Yeah, they have a rule about that separate thing out there too.
Mr. Milton, is, is the, is the lake itself surrounded by private property? Is it any urban property, does it, like? It's all been timbered on. So you would have to, you would have to get permission to cross private property.
They have to get permission under the county to fish in the water.
You're talking about the landowner.
They have to have a permit.
There's a permitting process, isn't there?
And he's saying where the public allowed to go in there, they would have to.
They would get trespassing on private property.
No, because you have an easement, I mean, the city workers have to go in there, so you got to wait for the people to go in there.
So the people that's really fishing out there, most of them, where they, they slip in and they help out.
Well, you got some people that, that goes out there, go to their man's house out there to go out there fishing. You got some people that got keys that can go out there, open the gate and go in there, go fish. So I'm going to stay on y'all about that right here, this is going to have to be right.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, your four minutes has expired.
See, you make, make it two weeks. Y'all want to do something in two weeks?
Go try out there tonight, put a jewelry on.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments from the public?
I'll promote them over here, John.
And most of them are set on paper, due in the dirt.